All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Let's dive right into our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one building in Councilmember Carr's district. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. South Jamaica Gateway rezoning, an HPD application to facilitate the development of two mixed-use residential and community facility buildings with approximately 143 senior and affordable housing units in my district and Councilmember Williams' district. MHANY, multi-family preservation loan program, will facilitate the preservation of affordable housing across four city-owned buildings in the districts of Councilmembers Joseph, Lewis, and Narcisse. The rehabilitation of these buildings will preserve 12 rental units and one commercial space under the HPD multi-family preservation loan program. South Bushwick Neighborhood Homes will facilitate the creation of new affordable homeownership units on city-owned sites in Councilmembers Gutierrez and Nurses District under the HPD Open Door Program. 31-17, 12th Street rezoning, will facilitate a new five-story residential building with 35 housing units, nine of which will be permanently affordable units, under MIH and Councilmember Kabans' district. The council will modify this application to add the MIH deep affordability option. 343 West 47th Street Special Demolition Permit will allow the demolition of a portion of the residential floor area of an existing building in Councilmember Botch's district. This permit request comes after approved partial demolitions in 2019 and 2020. Two applications in Councilmember Brannon's district, 250-86th Street rezoning, will facilitate the legalization of a two-story mixed-use building with medical offices and residential space. The council will modify this application to change the proposed R6B to an R5D and modify the rezoning area boundaries. Coney Island Phase III will facilitate the construction of a mixed-use building with 420 affordable housing units, as well as commercial and community facility space. Rents will be affordable to families at incomes ranging from 30% to 90% of the area median income. At least 15% of units will be reserved for referred formerly homeless tenants who will pay 30% of their income as rent. Two landmark preservation designations. The Brooklyn Edison Building in Councilmember Wrestler's district, the original headquarters of our city's leading electricity company, served in Brooklyn from the late 19th century through the mid-20th century, was built in the Renaissance Revival style and housed a lighting and telephone system. The building was home to a variety of businesses since the Brooklyn Edison Company merged with Con Edison in 1943. Today, it is used as an office building with commercial space. And the One Wall Street Banking Room interior in Councilmember Marte's district was completed in 1931 and is decorated in the Art Deco style, designed by architects Ralph Walker and Perry Koch Smith and muralist Hildreth Mier. The banking room features intricate mosaics and a 30-foot-high ceiling. The interior banking room will soon be converted for rental use for a department store. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 956C, sponsored by Councilmember Carolina Rivera, would update the technical requirements for artwork on sidewalk sheds and construction fences. I invite Councilmember Rivera to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you. Hey, everyone. Good afternoon. I am very, very pleased to be here. We all know New York City is a beacon of arts and culture, and I'm proud to serve as the body's chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs and Libraries. And today, we're going to be voting on Introduction 956, which will enhance the City Canvas Program. This program allows artists to really showcase their artistic expressions on sidewalks, on sheds, on scaffolding, on fences of the city. It was initiated as a pilot program for several years and was recently launched citywide as New York City's City Canvas Program, and thanks to former councilmember and now DCLA Commissioner Lori Combo for her leadership on this issue. So, working with DCLA, we are proposing to amend the law to allow artists to paint directly on surfaces. And how is that different from what exists? The original iteration of the program required that the art be printed and secured to the surface. That made things more expensive and less reliable than painting. And we all know, it's always a challenging time to be a professional in New York City. We want to ensure that artists have what they need, the resources, to be able to showcase their art in whatever way necessary, especially through partnerships with the city. I think that's incredibly important that we support them. So, this change is expected to increase participation in the program and make it more affordable. We know why sidewalk sheds are important. We know why scaffolding is important. It's to keep people safe as buildings are maintained, but they can have impacts on local economies and quality of life. Many of you, maybe you're walking down the street, are you less likelier to enter a business or a restaurant because it is covered in a sidewalk shed, maybe one that's been there a long time, and that is dilapidated likely? In fact, a recent report commissioned by New York City and conducted in cooperation with MasterCard showed that cardholders spend between $3,900 and $9,500 less each month at businesses located in buildings with sidewalk sheds. And restaurants and bars are the most impacted, reporting a 3.5% to 9.7% decrease in weekly transactions in the six months following shed construction. So, it clearly has these sorts of effects that are adverse, and we want our businesses to feel supported. Very proud to work with DCLA Commissioner Combo and, of course, the leadership of the Speaker and my colleagues to protect small businesses and enhance the beauty of our streetscape through this program, and look forward to seeing more vibrant and inspired protective structures in communities across the city. So, we don't want those eyesores to exist in any way possible, and I guess to quote Andrew, "Not so shabby sheds."
I'm from New York.
I'll give credit where it's due. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you so much.
Next, we will vote on three bills sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan. Chair of Committee on Contracts to Increase Efficiency and Transparency in the City's Contracting and Procurement Processes. Introduction 801A would require city agencies to provide contractors with a written explanation when denying approval of a subcontractor upon the contractor's request. Introduction 802A would require the city's chief procurement officer to establish guidelines for a standard insurance policy for all food procurement vendors. Introduction 803A would provide vendors with a formal mechanism to challenge procurement decisions, requiring the Procurement Policy Board, or PPB, to establish rules for such challenges. I invite Councilmember Wan to talk about her legislation.
Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Thank you so much, Speaker Adams. Good afternoon. My name is Julie Wan, and I am currently the Chair of Contracts. And this morning, we are proud to support these three bills that are passing with the expedited support of the City Council, especially the Speaker herself. The current Adams administration has wasted millions of taxpayer dollars in questionable contracts, which these bills aim to reform. From awarding $150 million on a no-bid contract to provide security at a migrant shelter, to a company once owned by the former deputy mayor, Phil Banks, to former NITRA employees pocketing $2 million bribes and steering more than $13 million in corrupt city contracts, and the list goes on. There is no better time to reform our city contracting process as now. And what those three bills that we just talked about, firstly, for 801 and 803, these are coming directly out of feedback from our current vendors, both prime and subcontractors. So, 801 is a local law to amend the administrative code for the city of New York in relation to explanations for subcontractor denials in city contracting. Currently, the city is able to deny any subcontracts that they want with zero explanation. As well as 803, where it is a local law to amend New York City's charter in relation to protesting an agency's procurement decisions. We've heard from many vendors who have come to our office letting us know that they were denied a city contract that they were long awarded, when a head of a city agency has said, "We want you to use this subcontractor." And when they said no because of a variety of reasons, that contract, that main contract, was taken away from them and awarded to somebody else, and the list goes on. These two bills will now provide an avenue where they will have the time and the voice to be able to protest a denial, as well as every single agency will have a city contracting officer who will have to answer the questions, as well as protections for labor unions and others, like nonprofits, who are fearful of speaking up when they feel they were wrongfully taken away or denied a contract that they have long been awarded. And at this time, there has been accusations or allegations about wrongful designations of contracts to a certain friend of someone in power, that we are contracting rightfully, transparently, and have accountability for our city's contracting process. Every single year, 30%, up to 30%, or 20% or above of our city's taxpayer dollars are used for contracting. That means that that's at minimum $20 billion going out on these city bids. We want to ensure legislatively that they are done fairly. Lastly, Intro 802 is a local law to amend the administrative code for the city of New York in relation to establishing a standard insurance policy for food procurement vendors. We've heard time and time again, where we heard from new arrivals, as well as regular New Yorkers who are shelter residents, saying that the food quality is horrible in our shelters. And the amount of food waste that we're seeing in the news, as well as in any local shelter, is tremendous, and that's a tremendous amount of waste. Yet, when food vendors, like our local mom-and-pop restaurants, want to compete for these food contracts, they're unable to. Because if you're a local small business owner, especially a minority or women-owned business, you don't have the money to pay all these different insurance premiums from every single agency. So, what this bill will do now is have one standardized insurance premium, so that way, whether you're contracting with HPD, or the DOE, or H&amp;H, or DHS, that you don't have to have multiple insurance premiums to serve the same food to these locations, but now you can qualify at a much easier rate. And this is just the beginning of the work that we're doing to provide reform for our contracting process. We're currently working on compliance laws that we're going to be passing, so stay tuned for more contracts reforms to ensure that this does not happen ever again in our city, no matter which mayor is in power. Thank you so much for the support of Speaker Adams.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you so much, Councilmember Wan. The next set of bills we're going to vote on are related to maternal health. Yesterday, I delivered an emergency speech to convey the urgency necessary for our city to confront maternal mortality. The continued deaths and their severe racial disparities are a continued injustice that we cannot allow to persist. In New York City, black women are six times more likely than our white counterparts to die due to pregnancy-related causes. As a society, we've accepted maternal mortality as an unfortunate casualty, when in fact, most deaths could have been prevented. New Yorkers are looking for us for leadership. While we recognize that progress has been made, because of advocates, members of this Women Majority Council, several of whom are standing with me here today, city agencies, the state, and others, we must also be honest that there are limitations to solving this issue solely through new laws alone. As a society and a city, we must reject acceptance of maternal mortality and some of the issues that perpetuate it. That's why I raised the alarm and level of urgency and announced that the council will help convene all stakeholders from the city, state, and federal government, as well as the brilliant minds of our public and private hospital systems, university medical students, community-based organizations, healthcare providers, labor unions, advocates, and survivors, with the goal of creating the political will for coordinated action on solutions to end maternal mortality. The maternal health crisis is a public health emergency, and I will consistently use my voice as speaker to keep it at the forefront of our city's agenda. We have the talent, resources, and tools to change the trajectory of maternal mortality in our city. No one should die from preventable causes, and we owe it to our mothers, without whom there is no life, to work together and get this right. At the same time, the council will continue with oversight and lawmaking where we can to make a difference. At our last stated meeting, the council passed a legislative package addressing maternal mental health in recognition that it is one of the greatest causes of maternal mortality. Today, we are continuing this work by voting on bills to strengthen support for those who can become pregnant. Resolution 293A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Chisholm-Chance Act, which would establish a plan to address the severe maternal morbidity crisis in Brooklyn and the Bronx. Resolution 133A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to increase Medicaid reimbursement to cover eight pre- and postnatal visits, as well as delivery support by doulas. Introduction 891A, sponsored by Councilmember Farrah Lewis, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to annually post information related to the Maternal Mortality and Morbidity Review Committee on its website. Introduction 892A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, would require employers to distribute their written lactation room accommodations policy to an employee when they are hired and post the policy in their workplace and on their internet, if one exists. I invite Councilmember Lewis to talk about her important bills.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I'm happy to be joined by four mamas up here as we talk about maternal health. Thank you again, Speaker Adams, to provide us with a platform to continue advancing legislation that protects the most vulnerable among us. My name is Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. I'm honored to have two significant bills passed today, Intros 891 and 892, both addressing issues surrounding maternal health in our city, but also promoting and protecting health, safety, and well-being of women and birthing people in our city. It is no secret that our city has a considerable journey ahead to ensure that we are protecting the needs of all women, particularly during their childbirth journeys. And it is our responsibility as a council to ensure we can do everything we can to support and safeguard them. Just last week, Brooklyn was devastated by the tragic death of a young mother during childbirth at Wood Hall Hospital, the third woman of color to die in labor at this hospital since 2020. Beverlyne Garcia Barrios was 24. When she went to the hospital, because she was not feeling well, she passed away after an emergency C-section. This is a travesty and definitely was preventable, and it's unacceptable. If we want the public to trust our healthcare institutions, especially our public health organizations, we must legislate transparency and accountability. This is why today, we will pass Intros 891, which mandates the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to publish an annual report detailing the membership of Maternal Mortality Morbidity Review Committee. This transparency is crucial, as it empowers the public to know who is responsible for holding our institutions accountable for their actions, especially when our lives are at stake. And the second bill, Intro 892, builds on the ongoing work toward workplace equity, focusing on lactation accommodations for new mothers. This bill mandates that employers provide written policies on lactation room accommodations at the time of hiring and ensures that these policies are readily accessible. Both bills take action towards accountability, and we will improve maternal health outcomes. And these are specifically designed to reduce the impact of racial disparities in our institutions. This will improve the experience of care of marginalized women here in our city. I express my gratitude to Speaker Adams for her unwavering commitment to equity. Sahar Mazami, our analyst, who contributed to these pieces of legislation to make them a reality. Today, we are taking essential steps towards justice and equity for mothers in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. And Introduction 912B, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require DOHMH to develop and distribute parenting resource materials to parents and guardians of newborn children. I invite Councilmember Gutierrez up to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Buenas tardes. Today, we continue this council's dedication to reducing maternal mortality, a drumbeat that has become ever more urgent. Like mentioned by Councilmember Lewis, last month, we lost a young mother. We received the heartbreaking news just a couple last week of this tragic death at Wood Hall, my beloved Wood Hall, where I brought my first child into this world, where I sought my prenatal and postnatal care. And this loss is painful and a reminder of the work that we still have to do. Throughout my time as a council member, the bills I've introduced and passed reflect a common thread: protecting and keeping women and their families alive. From the first bills, like the doula pilot program, to the Marshall Plan for Moms Task Force, I have consistently advocated for solutions that ensure safety and support for new parents. Just last week, I passed a bill focused on maternal mental health, further underscoring our commitment to this cause. I also introduced NYC Text for Kids, an initiative in automated text messaging system that will help parents and guardians receive crucial information about their children's developmental milestones. These efforts are not just about maternal health, they are about making it possible for families to thrive in New York City, to have some orientation, to have resources, to have options. My fierce advocacy for childcare and these supportive services aim to get people back to work, make raising children in this city doable, and, most importantly, keeping birthing people alive. We have the solutions and the recommendations. We know what needs to be done. Now is the time to go all in and ensure that everyone is on board. Today, I'm proud to pass the Newborn Navigator Act, which was inspired by my district director, Angelica Colon. This legislation is a common-sense solution that will provide new parents with easy access to essential resources, all in one place. If you're a parent, you know how sleep-deprived you are, how hungry you are, how dehydrated you are, and if a place existed where you can just pop your problems in and get a solution locally and in the city, that would save you so much time that you can dedicate to yourself. It's about saving lives, plain and simple. And as the Speaker said yesterday during her speech on maternal mortality, in New York City, the leading cause of pregnancy-associated deaths was our mental health conditions, and this bill can help lower that number, it can save lives. I'm thankful to the Speaker for her leadership, but also her partnership. I think she has been steadfast since shepherding in this new council on her commitment to reducing and eliminating maternal morbidity in the city of New York, and it's something that I've personally spoken to her about, and I know that I'm just very grateful to have her in this position and her leading this campaign. And I know that as a mom and as a grandma, she understands this. And as a HHC baby, we're both on her hospital babies, we want to see these beloved institutions thrive and never have to see or experience the loss of another pregnant person again at any of our institutions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. This concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will take on topic questions. Come on, this is great legislation. Jeff, Andrew, Katie.
I'm curious, I know with your speech yesterday, do we know yet who's going to be on this panel and more details about, I guess, and what are the benchmarks? I know some people, there's a timeline, and there's certain, I hate to use the word deliverables, but.
Yeah, and it's a good question, Katie. We're still very new in our inception. What I can let you know is that since that speech yesterday, I have had so many folks reach out to me, wanting to be a part of this. We've got think tanks that are already established, which we knew. We actually spoke about it yesterday, but to hear the enthusiasm and the voices that just want to be louder and be a part of this, to finally put forth solutions that are workable, that everybody can agree on together, and not just have all of these solutions, these ideas, these think tanks, just in a bubble, not doing anything, just stagnant with a lot of information, not having any place to go. So, you're going to see us start to take shape very, very quickly, but I don't have the specifics yet. Once we do, we're going to start laying them out.
Is it a mix of OB-GYNs, other doctors, public health officials? I don't know how you envision the makeup of.
Oh, yeah. We kind of laid that out a little bit yesterday. Everyone from our health experts to advocates, folks that have been in the arena, primarily we want health experts and people that have done reports on this, people that have actually spoken to families that have been in situations. So, we're going to draw those brilliant minds together to work with us. Thank you.
On the subcontract legislation, it was discussed, Phil Banks mentioned, what was the inspiration for this legislation? Was it brought up in response to investigations?
Initially, it was actually brought up by Local 1010, a labor union, because they have had, and for example, we've had contracts with, for example, I think it was Gartner that was brought up in the press, where they were originally contracted to build the wall for the United States by Donald Trump, and then they had won a contract here, and people had issues and questioned the ethics of it. And right now, anyone can deny a subcontract, yet there is no way to protest a subcontract. And people feel very at risk, where they don't want to come out publicly and say, "Hey, this happened to me because I want to take this subcontract or this commissioner requested that I take." So, there's a lot of corruption that we're currently seeing in real time, as well as ethics, questionable ethics, and who we're contracting with as a city on taxpayer dollars. And what the 803 would do for subcontracts, as well as procurement decisions, is now a labor union, like Local 1010, can say, "Hey, this vendor or this contractor has been very problematic in the ways that they treat workers." But the workers themselves no longer have to put themselves at risk. They can have their labor union or a spokesperson, like a steward, bring that up to the city, to the contract officer of that agency directly, and they will have to answer on paper, on the record. And for subcontract denials, we heard also at a hearing firsthand, nonprofits who run shelters for migrants will have a list of their subcontractors that they've been working with, with DHS for the last 20 years. And we've heard from them that they were denied their subcontractors for no reason that they know of, and there was no response on why, and now they're scrambling to find subcontractors that can do deliveries, for example, for food at the lowest amount of price, that's also halal, culturally sensitive, et cetera, yet they aren't really given a reason on why someone who met those criteria and the dollar amount was denied. Yet, there seems to be some sort of recommendation, saying, "I know this subcontractor, and you should subcontract with them." And we have submitted a report to DOI to further investigate, as well as oath on allegations that certain commissioners were requiring them or recommending them to work with certain subcontractors, and when they decided not to, their prime contract was taken away and awarded to somebody else. So, that's what we're trying to prevent in the future.
Thank you.
Off-topic. Any other on-topic? Off-topic. I mean, it's all on-topic, in reality. Madam Speaker, two weeks ago here, you said you were urging the mayor to show that he could demonstrate the focus to the job, and I think your exact words, seriously and honestly consider whether full attention can be given to the workers who need all of his attention. Since you made that statement, the chancellor has resigned, Sheena Wright has resigned, Phil Banks has resigned, I'm going to forget the other list of names of people who have stepped down. Is that what you were looking to see? Do you feel like this has strengthened his position that he can continue to do the job? And if not, have you taken any further actions or done any further study towards what powers you may have with the city council to do something about?
Thank you, Andrew, for the question, and thank you for quoting me. Things I can honestly say and thankfully say, that we really have not seen on the council side any negative imbalance because of what's going on with the administration, thankfully. We remain steadfast in our work for the people of the city of New York. As you know, we are in hearings pretty much on a daily basis, multiple hearings, so we're still doing the work of the people. We are continuing to work with our agency heads, our commissioners, our deputy mayors, who are so committed to the work that they're doing as well. So, those communications, those relationships continue, regardless of the resignations that have happened over the past week or so. We are continued in our bonds, and we are committed to maintaining those bonds with the administration and the work that we do together.
Speaker, yesterday, the mayor announced that they're closing the HERC on Randall's Island by February. You know, I know the council was never really a fan of these tent shelters. How do you feel about that announcement? And also, would you like to see the other HERCs closed quickly? In addition to that, Jessica Tisch's name is being floated around as perhaps the next police commissioner. What do you think of that appointment?
Thank you very much, Ethan, for the question. Thank you for the questions. I can't speculate on any appointments, you know, as far as commissioners. Those mayoral appointments, they're maintained with the mayor, so we'll see what happens with that. I happen to think, and I'm pretty sure I can speak to my colleagues, I believe Commissioner Tisch has done an outstanding job as our sanitation head of that agency. She has been flawless and totally committed to us, to our constituents. As far as the closures of the HERCs, I am happy to see those HERCs slowly but surely diminish in number. I realize that there was a census, it still is a census issue. People need a place to live, but yes, the hope is that folks are moving into housing, hopefully permanent housing, housing of some sort across the city and other places. So, yes, we are glad to see those HERCs closing.
Good afternoon, Speaker. A recent poll found 69% of New York City adults believe the mayor should resign. Do you agree with that majority of New York City adults? And then, if the instability in the mayor's office reaches a point where it does impact the governing of the city, are there any steps that the city council might be able to take? Do you agree with that majority of New York City adults? And then, if the instability in the mayor's office reaches a point where it does impact the governing of the city, are there any steps that the city council might be able to take? Have you thought about that possibility, and how would you act in that moment?
Thank you for the questions. As far as the mayor's resignation, we still maintain his right to due process, and we're going to stand right there. As far as any instability in the future, that's a bit of a hypothetical, that we really don't want to cross into the hypothetical space. But what I will say is that there are steps that are available in the charter. There are steps also that are available right now and reside with the governor. So we see the relationship between the governor and the mayor working. We see that she is coming out to tell us all, in the media for the most part, what her plans are and what she's done relative to the mayoral administration. So for now, we are going to continue to look for her guidance and her work with the mayor to keep stability on the other side of City Hall. And as I said, we are going to keep on maintaining our position to do what we do as the council and maintain our connections and our work together.
Have you had any conversations with the governor about the recent instability?
I have not. Thank you.
Who are you speaking with when you're thinking about the future of the city and the mayor? You know, are you, if not the governor, are you talking to congress members, are you only talking to your own members? Who are you discussing with?
Thanks for the question, and thanks for being so nosey. I do speak to my colleagues in government quite often, candidly. We have always maintained a great relationship from congress members to assembly members, senators, and of course, my colleagues here in the council. So we are speaking regularly and always have, you know, even before, you know, these unfortunate circumstances have, you know, befallen us. So that's going to continue. We'll also listen to, you know, our citizens of New York. You know, we're listening to them as well, so we're having conversations. The question was asked whether or not I had spoken to the governor, I believe I had it in context, correct me if I'm wrong, recently, over the recent developments, I have spoken to the governor initially. We did have a conversation, but not since these moves have happened.
Two questions. So, at least ten unfilled top positions at City Hall right now, who knows exactly the changes, but is the council worried about the public safety roles that are still without a permanent replacement? And I have a second question. Okay. Jomani Williams and Hakeem Jeffries have urged the mayor to provide New Yorkers with a concrete plan on how he's been around the city while navigating court appearances, hyperventilations. New such plan has been put forward by the mayor yet. Would the council like to see that plan? If yes, would the council put pressure on the mayor to put that plan out?
Thank you for the questions. The first question pertaining to public safety.
Yeah, worried about those being unfilled.
I trust that those positions for public safety will be filled. And I also trust in the interim or acting commissioner at this time. I think that he is doing fine, and we continue to look for his guidance when it comes to public safety. As far as the plans by the congressman and the public advocate, I'm not aware of those plans. I was not in.
Did they ask the mayor to put forward a plan on how he would navigate court appearances and his role as mayor? And I think they gave him like twenty-four hours, he never put it forward. So would the council like to see a plan there?
We continue to work, as I said, with the mayoral administration the way that we always have, and have our relationship with them. So far, I'm going to say so far so good, as far as the council and the mayoral administration is concerned. So we're not, you know, privy or don't have anything to do with plans that were asked, you know, by the, you know, other elected officials.
I have two questions also. One is for Councilmember Vera, actually. You put out a bill today that would require the Department of Transportation to create thirty-five e-bike battery stations around the city, and I'm curious, what was the reasoning behind putting that out, and how does it work in conjunction with the other initiatives, like the Department of Sustainable Delivery, the announcement earlier in the summer that private businesses can put charging stations on sidewalks? Like, how does it play to all of that?
Well, we certainly want to expand the conversation around e-bike charging, battery safety, as much as possible. So what we've seen in my own district in Cooper Square, and this was recently highlighted, is that having a safe e-bike charging station, it has contributed to a decrease in the accidents and deaths that have occurred typically and historically over time. So we want to ensure that we're working with the workers themselves, of course, the agencies, because they are the ones installing the infrastructure and leading the city, and also looking at how heavily utilized these modes of transportation are. Many people use e-bikes just as a part of a city bike. This is a part of our daily commute now, and we're seeing more delivery workers than ever. So we're looking to have the conversation with DOT, with my colleagues, hopefully have a hearing on it soon, and see how we can expand this infrastructure responsibly for public safety reasons, and also because this is becoming a very, very popular means of transportation.
My second question is for Speaker Howard. Excellent, say that getting rid of part mandated citywide is the key to unlocking the full potential of the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity Plan, especially in mid-to-low density districts. I'm curious where you are on that part of the proposal, the City of Yes proposal?
Thank you for the question. City of Yes is still being considered. We have hearings next week, so we are still taking all input. We are hoping to get as much input as possible, so we will weigh in after the hearing. Thank you.
I, Speaker Adams.
Hi, Katie.
Two questions. The first is about Muriel Good Trufant. I know that the mayor said last week that he's going to bring her up for a hearing here for the council. I know how we saw how the Randy Mastrow hearing went. I think we're still remembering it, because we experienced it live. But when do we expect that hearing? And I know you previously said you support her, so I don't know what we can expect from that. And then the second question is about the, I know Andrew's already asked it about the mayoral inability committee. You were one of the UN murs, Wood Mulkey, I guess. How does that work practically? I know it's sort of the second, if the governor doesn't, but I don't know, have you spoken to the other members? Is there some sort of planning? And just to check in to see. Do you call it? Can anyone on the panel call it?
Good questions. Thank you. As far as Muriel Good Trufant, we certainly do appreciate all the decades of service at the City Law Department, and we look forward to examining her record, as we do with all candidates coming before the council, and considering her nomination in accordance with our charter mandated responsibilities, if and when the administration formally nominates her. We're still waiting for that nomination. So we're looking forward to that. As far as the inability committee is concerned, I think that it's important to note the historical perspective of an inability committee. It devolved from Mayor Koch having a stroke, a stroke heart attack, I believe it was a stroke, in office. So the word inability, I believe, was chosen because of that very fact of the mayor being physically enabled to fulfill his role. That is not what we have in this instance. So at the time, we are not looking at, you know, enacting an inability committee, primarily because of the historical perspective of why it was created.
So just to be clear, the mayor's office, I know you said last week he was, they haven't submitted Muriel Good Trufant yet for nomination?
Correct. We're waiting.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
What are they waiting for? Are they distracted? I don't know.
You distracted. Have a great day, everybody.
Thanks for my mint.
You're welcome.
He is.
Yes.
Hi.